Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 19th, 2021 Board Business and Conference Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. Could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible)
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 Martha, would you be kind enough to call a roll for us this evening?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Minji?
Here.
Mr. Sinto?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Nagras?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here, thank you. I want to thank Ms. Wedeman for filling in for me last public board meeting while I was on vacation. She did a great job, thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't go away again.[72.11][72.11](laughing)
The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our school environment is safe and nurturing; Excellence in education is a shared responsibility in partnership with all district and community members; Whole child development is vital to our educational system; Supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical, and career, and social, emotional learning; Our decision-making process is student-centered, and student voice is valued. The district's goals for the 2020 through 2025 years fall in three areas: The first is social and emotional wellness, to produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish. The second is to prepare contemporary citizens, modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society. And the third is diversity and inclusion, to establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency. Mission statement is on our website. As you've probably seen, a public session is split into two sections at this point going forward. Initial public session will include items that are on the agenda for the board to consider this evening, and the second public session will be towards the end of the agenda, covering any other item. (coughs) Excuse me. I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the August 5th, 2021 regular public board meeting. Sinto, move.
Larson, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? When I call your name, if you could come to the microphone, state your name and address, you'll have three minutes, and then I'll ask you to please finish up. First person is Christina Johnson. Christina?
One, because I didn't want to let my husband or my son sit there and think that I'm not fighting for my son to have the same choice that everyone else has. So, I want to say thank you first for allowing me to have a few minutes to speak. The second is, and I just know this is a topic that is ongoing, that is something that has been a hot topic for a while. You guys are the school board. You work for us, the parents. I want you to think about the conditioning and the deteriorating of the children's mental health that you, the school board, are subjecting our children to. You're subjecting our children to a mandate within the school district, one that isn't even mandated by the government, by the governor, in the state of Pennsylvania. He gave you guys the choice, just like I'm asking to give our children the choice. You want to come to school with a mask on? That's your choice. You want to come to school without a mask on? That's your choice as well. We're teaching our children to think for themselves. That's what, as educators, as our school board, you're supposed to do that. My child doesn't have to come to school restricted in a mask because someone else thinks that's what benefits them. If these masks work, like everyone thinks or says that they do, then your child, or your teacher, or your school board will be fine if my son chooses not to come into school with a mask. Because I tell you, my son will not come to school in a mask every day. If you choose to send him home, that's on you, but you legally cannot do that. You cannot send my child home. I want us to have a choice for our children, just like you have a choice what you wear every day, what you eat every day. You have a choice in the decisions you make in life, whether you're 18 or older, or 18 and younger. That's their choice. You are putting a limit on how our children can think for themselves. And it is absolutely your job, for the people that work for us. You are elected into the school board. You work for us, the parents. We know what's best for our children. Nobody else does. The fact that there's statistics that show 98% recovery, the flu is worse than that. We all know that. Half the people don't even more get vaccinated with the flu shot. But putting something in someone's hands that's not even the parental guardian of the children that come to school, that we pay for, the taxes, I can't see that. The CDC doesn't know what's going on. The government doesn't know what's going on. Nobody knows what's going on. It's been a roller coaster ride the last year and a half for our children. Think about the mental state that you are putting our children in. They need to be able to go in, make a choice that's for themselves. If my child says, "Mom, I'm walking in with a mask today," okay, that is your choice. We gave them that freedom.
Christina, could you finish up, please, and just by way of housekeeping, we need your address also.
That's fine. But we're supposed to give our children that freedom. We give them that decision. Nobody else. Thank you.
Address, please.
401 North Manoa Road.[477.71][477.71](applause)
Excuse me. Excuse me. The meeting will come to order.[487.65][487.65](applause) The meeting will come to order. Thank you. Address, please.
401 North Manoa Road.
Thank you very much, Christina. Our next speaker is Todd Hall.
Todd Hall, 535 Country Club Lane. Reading from Pennsylvania, Title 23, Section 63 of Pennsylvania law: Interfering with the breathing of a child is child abuse. Now, we live in a world where we seem to take a lot of rules and laws literally. We've heard stories of children turning their pop tart into something looking like a weapon and being suspended somewhere else, but still in the school environment. So if we're taking things literally, we should take this literally as well. Interfering with the breathing of a child is child abuse. And there is no conclusive benefit that masks work. Children were not designed to be wearing fabric over their face all day. It is severely limiting their freedom of expression. We know that most expression is nonverbal, but that can't happen when they have a mask over their face. There is extraordinarily limited information, or almost no information or conclusive proof that masks have any benefit. You are introducing particles of fabric into children's lungs by having a piece of cloth be up at their breathing orifice all day? You're creating a climate of fear when you ask them to wear a mask. And again, you have no legal authority to make this requirement. The governor has not issued an emergency order, and you cannot make regulations about the health and welfare of children absent of that. I don't know if there's any political thoughts to masks. Some people have them, some people don't, but if anyone here does, please set them aside, find another way to be concerned about the last president, and let our children show their faces. Thank you.[608.01][608.01](applause)
Our next speaker is Monae Riley. Monae?
My name is Monae Riley, and I live at 400 Glendale Road in Haverford Town. I have two points for public comment this evening. The first is on the facility use agreement. It states on the agenda that you are set to approve the identified childcare providers for the use of the designated spaces to provide childcare services as specified for the upcoming school year. Before this is voted on, I would hope more questions are being asked as to who these identified childcare providers are, where are the designated spaces, and what are the specified services. I want nothing more than for schools to open this year and remain open all year. But if for some reason schools close due to Delta, what I absolutely do not want is for a YMCA or other provider to be allowed to enact the service as they proposed last year, where children are no longer allowed to enter their public school buildings to receive a free and appropriate education, but can pay the YMCA to sit in those same classrooms under their watch. Please release more information on these contracts or ask more questions before voting on this measure. Secondly, again, my wish is for schools to remain open and for my children to be able to participate as much as their peers. As some of you here know from conversations, my son Liam has asthma, and he is too young to be vaccinated. Normal childhood illnesses such as a minor cold can put him out of school for a week. Illnesses such as strep, croup, or the flu can and have sent him to the hospital in respiratory distress. I do not want to imagine what COVID-19 would do. The medically fragile children in this district seem to have been forgotten about in the screaming matches between adults. Protecting other children in our community is not a foreign practice. This is why our safe foods list exists. My children do not have any food allergies, but we do not send peanut butter as snacks because those allergies do not deserve to be unnecessarily exposed to things that can make them ill. Our family's minor inconvenience of having to be creative and find different snacks that work is nothing compared to the angst the families of those children would have if their child was harmed in that exposure. This community care for one another is how I view our mask requirement, everyone pitching in to keep children like mine and others safe from becoming seriously ill. Thank you for making the decision to require masks and being committed to keeping our schools open.
Thank you.[762.73][762.73](applause) Our next speaker is Cara Hodewannick. Cara?
Hi, my name is Cara Hodewannick. I live at 1375 Harrington Road. That's right by Linwood. Hi, Mrs. Minji. I'm going into 10th grade at Haverford High School. We get the first bit of our schedules tomorrow, and I'm really excited about that, have been for weeks. But what this also means is that every decision you make impacts me, and my sister, and my friends, and my family. The upcoming school year is terrifying. You want us to do lunch in the cafeterias. I know you're setting them up to CDC guidelines. I know this is a hard situation, no matter which way you cut it. But the cafeteria already gets rowdy. That's kind of just the nature of school lunches. I don't think any amount of Plexiglas could stop that. You can't tell me there are no other options. I don't need it to be perfect. It's not going to be. But there are so many students, and families, and teachers, and the current safety plan feels like a bare minimum, particularly for the first few weeks of school, when most people are coming back from vacation, especially with the increasing number of school-aged kids in hospitals. And I know you know that. I just want to be safe. I'm asking you to do the extraordinary. If you need to have principals supervise rooms for smaller lunch groups, if you need to set up plans for outdoor spaces, whatever else, do it. The world is not easy. This is not going to be an easy year. You signed up to protect me, and my little sister, and my friends, and the teachers that work so hard for us. So I'm asking you to do things that are beyond not easy, because I deserve a safe and wonderful life, and you all were elected to try your best to give me that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cara.[886.23][886.23](applause) Our last speaker in this part of public session is Sarah Fay. Sarah?
Good evening. My address is 47 Waverly Road, Haverford Town. We've had since March 2020 to figure out a lot of things in regards to masking. And while there is a lot we don't know, there is also a lot we do know. We know for a fact that children are not getting serious cases of COVID. It's very rare. The numbers are about the same as the flu for children in terms of hospitalization and deaths, and you can look that up on the CDC website. Many of us saw the point of masking early on in the pandemic, especially when we were told just 14 days to flatten the curve. We saw the point of masking, children to protect vulnerable adults, like the building staff and elderly grandparents that many students live with. We were told to wait for the vaccine, that's the magic bullet. But then the vaccine became available to anyone that wanted to get it at no cost. We thought, okay, now mask mandates for children will be removed, but they were not. So here we are, with no end in sight, still masking kids, and the board is going along with this. Why? Because the CDC said so. You are supposed to be working in the best interests of our children, but you're not. You're working in the best interest of the CDC, which frankly, I could care less about. I care about these kids, and you should too. I have not heard one board member even address the possible adverse effects of masking on kids. What does a third school year of masking do to a second grader? Have you even taken one moment to think about that? I've heard all about the CDC, but not one of you has spoken about how kids' developing immune systems are being impacted, how their social and emotional development is being impacted. Do you care? Are you too busy checking the CDC website to find out what color we're at? Dr. Fauci is not in charge of this. His only job is to track COVID. He's not looking at the long-term effects of masking to young children's developing immune systems. That's not his job. It's our job to think about this. We are parents and educators in this room. It's our job, not Dr. Fauci's. The cases in Delaware County are the same as they were in mid-May. I'm not sure where this word substantial came from, but it's arbitrary. We need to look at hospitalizations, not case counts. This is what matters. Realistically, at some point, we need to let these kids live, and not just behind Plexiglas. Please start fighting for our kids, and if you're not up to the fight, then please let other people take seats on the board that can think critically and be brave enough to look at this long-term consequences of masking kids for years on end. This is the third school year. I mean, what's happening to these kids' immune systems?[1074.41][1074.41](knocking)
Order, please.
I mean, if anybody could tell me what you guys have been doing to look at the long-term effects to kids, I would love to give up the rest of my time to hear that. Thank you.[1087.83][1087.83](applause)
Next item on our agenda is superintendent's remarks. Dr. Rishi is away this evening, so Jen Saxo is filling in. Jen?
Thank you so much, Mr. Feinberg. At the first part of my remarks, I would like to welcome Dr. Brennan to speak with the board this evening. You may recall, we've had Dr. Brennan here speaking with the board in prior meetings. He is a Chief Medical Officer and Senior Vice President of the University of Pennsylvania Health Systems. He's a board-certified infectious disease and internal medicine specialist and a selected member of the Delaware County Board of Health. And we thank Dr. Brennan for being here this evening. We'd like to welcome him to the podium to share some remarks with us this evening. Thank you, Dr. Brennan.
So, let me begin by saying that I'm here to express my opinions. I'm here on a pro bono basis. I am an appointed member of the Board of Health, but I'm not here representing the Board of Health. The Board of Health hasn't taken a position on any matters related to COVID at this point in time, so I'm not representing the Board of Health or Delaware County. So I'll start by just reviewing where we stand in the pandemic. Right now, Delaware County is averaging about 70 to 80 new cases per day, following a NADA that we saw in the summer, in the early to mid-July timeframe, where there were a number of days where we had zero cases, and many others where the cases were in single digits. All of the counties in the region are kind of running in parallel at the present time, and on an upward trend. All of our...[1205.11][1205.11](knocking)
Order, please.
All of our laboratories are tracking...
If you can't behave, I'll clear the room.
Let him speak, please.
I'm recessing the meeting, and I'll ask the officer to escort this woman out of the room, please.[1231.23][1231.23](crowd cheering) This is a business meeting, and we have business to accomplish. We're going to resume the meeting, and if we can't continue because it's out of order again, then we will recess and resume virtually on Monday evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feinberg. I have a few more superintendent remarks to share. Families of elementary students should have received a survey last evening, requesting some more information about what their needs are for the upcoming school year. The survey is also posted on the website, so if anyone didn't see it come through on their email and has an elementary child, you can find it there. And it will close on Wednesday, August 25th, and then we'll post the results on the website on Monday, August 30th. As we anticipate a new school year, families, we're sure, will have questions about building procedures, such as arrival and dismissal, as well as plans for lunch in our cafeterias. Principals are currently compiling all of that information, and will be communicating with families shortly. Our health and safety plan will be updated to reflect the most recent guidance, and this updated plan will appear on the agenda for a board vote during the September 2nd board meeting. I wanted to also take a moment this evening just to highlight the incredible work that our principals and our human resources departments have been doing to recruit and hire highly effective and highly qualified staff. It's been a busy summer, including hundreds of interviews and demonstration lessons, and that has resulted in hiring of 22 teachers and 11 long-term substitutes. We're still working to hire the last remaining folks, and we look forward to welcoming our new teachers and professionals during our induction and orientation activities next week. Finally, not only are we welcoming our staff back, but some of our students are already back. You may have seen them around the grounds when you attended here this evening. Our high school fall sports teams, as well as our band, and our color guard have all begun to practice and prepare for a new year. So it's exciting to see our young people back at our schools, and we look forward to welcoming the rest of their classmates back on September 9th for their first day of school. And that concludes my remarks.
Thanks, Jen. Next item on our agenda is construction update. Ken Matthews, can you hear?
Hello, everyone. As you know, now with school starting, we're kind of down to the wire. For Linwood, I'll start with that. You can see here a couple pictures. So, we were hoping to pave today, unfortunately, that storm kind of screwed that up a little bit. So, we're hoping early next week to be able to get most of the paving done, but sidewalks should be finished up tomorrow. I know it looks kind of a little bit crazy out there, but essentially, you know, we're prepped and ready for getting the paving done and getting all the handicap spaces done, so we can get the final township inspections, so that we can occupy the building. Essentially, the building itself is already all tested, done, sprinkler, fire alarm, all the certifications are complete. All of that's been done by the township. We're going to do one final walkthrough with the township on Monday, but as far as the building is concerned, all the life safety is complete. So, they've been working six days a week, but next week, we should be able to wrap things up from a parking lot perspective, but there will be, for the next month, a lot of landscaping going on, all the grass, so, you know, we'll work with Jillian and the staff there to try and keep the kids out of the mud, so to speak, so we're not dragging it into the building. So, we're right there. We knew it was going to come down to this. It was always planned that way. So, basically, in a week, things should be cleaned up. So that's where we are as far as Linwood's progress. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Questions from the board?
Quick question. With landscaping going on and everything, the playground area, though, will be completed?
Playground's done, that's a great question. Yeah, so in the back, inside the V of the building, it's fenced off completely, and that playground's done. The mulch is going in right now, so the basketball court will be done, line striping, hopscotch, et cetera, that's all done. So, it's really just that. And they'll be able to go out to the township fields, you know, until the grass is ready and the field's ready around the building. There's also some change orders for Linwood this evening, if anybody had any questions on them.
Good.
All right. So now for the high school. Obviously, we're in the same boat here, school's starting shortly. Pretty much the inside of the building, the addition is just about complete. There's a few little loose ends. We had supply chain issues, like everybody else has had, so we just got about 60 faucets today on site that they're putting in, but they'll be done by the weekend or Monday. But the cleaners have gone through. You can see the space really looks great. The new labs, prep lab up top right, we have some new ADA bathrooms that were installed, an SGI room. There's the hallway in the addition. The parking lot's pretty much complete. They're just putting up this little barrier here for the parking spaces. You can see some of the bio and physics labs down below. So, it's really come together. We'll obviously have punch list items to do, but overall, it's really cleaned up nicely, and we're just kind of getting everybody out of the space tomorrow. Movers are coming in on Monday to move everything in. And then another supply chain issue, lovely getting these updates, but some of the furniture is going to be right down to the wire, so we'll work through that with the district and make sure, of course, that there's something in there, whether it's the new furniture or something temporary until the new furniture arrives. So, but things are in good shape at the high school.
Questions from the board?
Then we had a few high school change orders as well, if there was any questions about them.
Jen, I gotta say, both of these projects look great.
They really do. Art Tech did a great job, and contractors did a nice job. It's nice to see them get done, and it'd be good to see children in here soon.
Thanks for all your good work.
No problem. Thank you. Have a good night.
Next item on our agenda is Power School Parent Portal expansion and eCollect process. Sarah? Rob?
Good evening, Mr. Feinberg, school board members, and the Haverford community. Thank you for providing us the time this evening. As a district, we recognize the importance of researching and exploring available technology resources that allow us to function at a greater level of efficiency and effectiveness. Tonight, Mr. Rob Anderson, our Director of Technology, is here to provide the school board and the community a brief overview on the district's recommendation to expand the use of Power School Parent Portal to all families across the district. This expansion will provide greater levels of accessibility and flexibility for our families, as well as data accuracy and timeliness for our district's staff members. Mr. Anderson will also be providing a timeline for implementation, which includes multiple levels of support and training opportunities for our families. We understand that change can sometimes be challenging for people, but I want to assure you that we are here to support and assist any way we can to ensure that you have access to this exciting new feature. So without any further ado, Mr. Anderson will lead us through what this expansion entails.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Good evening, and thank you for the time tonight to talk about some exciting enhancements we're looking to bring to the parent portal for our families.
Good evening, and thank you for the time tonight to talk about some exciting enhancements we're looking to bring to the parent portal for our families. Since not everyone might be familiar with what the parent portal is, thought that was a good place to start. Right now, we use the parent portal currently with our sixth through 12th grade families. Predominantly, they use it to access grade, schedule, and attendance information. It's only used in the sixth through 12th grade, as those are the teachers using the Power School gradebook currently. We're looking to add the ability for parents to complete their back-to-school forms through that portal. We've been doing kindergarten registration online for about five to six years now, so a majority of our elementary families are experienced with filling out forms and submitting them for their students already. So it seems like a logical next step at this point. So what we're proposing to do is to take our back-to-school packets, the pile of papers that have come back with the students the first week, for the parents to update all of their information with the school and put them into the parent portal for them to be able to be completed online now. Well, first, as far as when we talk about access, it would, it's actually going to make a greater level of security and safety for everyone's personal information as the sheets of paper with everyone's addresses and phone numbers won't be going back and forth with their students to and from school and then into the office. At this point, you would just fill out the form online, hit submit, and then it would securely send that information to our student information system. Each parent will get a, the ability to create their own individual login for their students and then tie that to all students that they have access to. So with one login, they'll be able to switch between all of their students and then complete forms and access information for, under that one login. So again, kind of just a brief overview of what everything looks like, since not everyone might have seen the parent portal before. You can see on the left is our menu for the parent portal. This is where you would access things like grades, schedules, and attendance information in the past. The one we're going to talk about predominantly tonight is the second option down with this, which is forms. So if a parent were to sign in and then click on forms, it's going to give them a list of all of the available forms for them to fill out for their student. You can see that we have most of our back-to-school forms already in there. And one point to bring up is that you would only see forms that were applicable to your students. So for example, only certain grades have to complete a, the health form for dental exam and physical exam. So if your student didn't need one this year, you wouldn't see that health form show up in your list of forms to complete. You'll also be able to tell which forms you've completed, which forms you have not, and whether they've been submitted yet. Our example will go through the emergency contact form, which is the big, long one that has all of the phone numbers and the dismissal plan and everything like that in it. That's the top option on the very small picture there. If you clicked on that, it would bring up a form that's going to look very similar to what our parents are used to, with the same fields that they've seen in the past. It'll already be populated with what the information we have in Power School already is. So if nothing's changed, it should mostly be submitting a form after you've reviewed it. You would only need to complete fields on there that have changed since the last time that you submitted a form. One other thing to bring your attention to that will be different from a traditional emergency contact form that our parents are used to is that Power Schools moved to an unlimited contact database instead of their old model. This will allow families to put as many names, phone numbers, and contact information that they need for their students. So any family member or neighbor or anybody else that might need to be contacted with regards to that student, they can fill that information in. Since this is a change for Power School, they have attempted to move your existing contact information over into there. But we are asking parents to kind of take an extra look at this information to make sure it's accurate and everything's attached to the right people. So you would look through the form and update any fields that need to be updated and click submit. That would then start the process of having that information loaded into our Power School system for our staff to access. Just kind of an overview of what our timeline looks like for this. So tonight, we're doing our, this presentation to kind of point out a couple of dates for people to save and take notice of. The plan would be for on Monday to send home information to our families about how to set up their parent portal account. Our families in seventh through 12th grade got this information in previous years, but our current K through six, this will be something new that they'll receive and be setting up. At that point, they'll be able to sign into the portal. Really, the thing most people have used in the past for grades and schedule won't be available yet. We're just doing this to get people kind of signed into the portal ahead of time and allow them to start filling some back-to-school forms out if they're interested. Then the following Tuesday, August 31st, we'll do a Zoom webinar with, to kind of get into some more details about how to create that access account, as well as how to go through the forms and kind of get into more of the weeds of how parents will actually complete these forms. That training will be recorded and then we'll post it on a page that we'll set up on the technology website that will include in all of our communication about other information about the portal with some additional help on how to create that access account and how to sign in, how to access different features within the portal. September 4th is when we would turn on the access to grades and schedules that everyone's traditionally used to going into the portal for. That's, that is traditionally the date that we turn the portal on altogether. But again, like I mentioned, we'd like the extra time to get the K through six families signed into the portal and help them out with any issues they might have. And then obviously, as the school year goes on, we'll work with the other departments and schools to get as many of those forms, paper forms, built into the portal so that parents can access them all through there, as well as starting to load some of the documents that parents are used to getting through email, such as report cards and bus passes and things like that will be loaded into there, trying to make the parent portal kind of a one-stop shop for them to get all of the information pertaining to their student rather than a couple of different places. And thank you. And obviously, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Laurie Ventriest, our Technology Integration Coordinator, and Gary Moyer, our Student Information System Coordinator, for all of their help in setting up the forms and the access in the portal, as well as the other administrators and the building secretaries on their input as we met with them during the summer about this process and some of their advice they gave us. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
I have a question, and I don't know if you said, is Power School, I know I have it on my phone. Is it also something you can log into on a website? And with doing forms, maybe it's easier to do on one platform or another? Can you speak to that a little?
I think you're talking, on your phone, you're talking about the app.
I have an app for Power School on my phone. And for people who don't know, one of the nice, nice features for me, not for my kids, is that it will do like a pop of a, you know, your child's grade has changed. And I can be like, what did you not, what, what didn't you sign in or what happened here? So it's a lot of transparency into what's going on. But I didn't know if it was also available on a, like a website, if you're typing in a form, it might be easier.
Yeah, most of our, our experience has been with the website version of all of it. I don't want to say for sure. I believe that it's also available through the app, but I don't. Okay, yeah, so it's available either platform, either through the web, through the website, or through the app.
And I just want to say too, I love that these forms will be retained from year to year and auto-populated because every year I know I'm scrambling to like, who did I make as a contact? And what's their cell phone number to write it down, right? So that, as parents, I'm sure we'll be thanking you for that, that feature.
I have a question. Is this also for kindergarten registration or is that a different process still, since that's, you know, a new family coming into the district?
No, we, we're talking, our registration system is also through Power School. So we're going to talk with them when we, each year, we have to set up the new, the new year registration package, and we're going to work with them to try and get the, the last page. There's, I think, about six forms that still have to be filled out and sent in, and we're going to work with them to try and get this process used as part of that.
Okay, that's great, yeah, especially for people who don't have printers at home. So that's, that'll be a really good feature for our family, new families coming in too.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, what language accessibility features does Power School have for our multilingual families?
Yeah, we were actually just looking at that today, just to make sure that that was turned on. When we went through our training and everything, it does have the ability to translate into other languages. We're looking at how to make sure that that's turned on before the Monday date so that as our families sign in, they have the choices of other languages for forms.
And also, what are the options for indicating gender in the registration system?
I don't know. That, that would be what the, that wouldn't be one of the forms we would be sending out. Wouldn't have that as one of the questions. It would be something that's built into Power School already. I would have to look.
Please, order. Rob, can you tell us what kind of support there is for parents who are using this for the first time? What, what do they do if they have questions? How, how do they get that support?
Yep, so the, so when we send out the information about how they set up their access account, we'll be including information about some training materials that we have on the website, the information about the webinar that we'll have the following Tuesday. In addition to that, we're always have, for the past few years, shared the, an email address, ithelpdesk@haverfordsd.net, that they're always welcome to email, and it'll create some support ticket, and then someone gets back to them and helps them with any issues they have.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Well, thank you both. This is, good luck with rolling this out. It's exciting, and we'll look forward to hearing an update.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda was going to be Policy 236.1, but the administration has requested that this item be referred to the policy committee before coming to the board for discussion this evening. Therefore, we are removing this item from the agenda, and we'll look for it to come back to the board at a later date. Next item on our agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve dispersments from the funds as listed.
Snodgrass, move. Kristen, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect, KCBA and Associates, Inc., and owner's representative, CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize change orders totaling $40,185.41 as listed.
Kristen, move. Schwartz, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the MCRIU service agreement, which includes the technology software program level data, along with implementation training hours for the term from August 1st, 2021, until June 30th, 2022, at a cost of $8,040. And I'm assuming MCRIU is Montgomery County Intermediate Unit?
Snodgrass, move. Larson, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to authorize special counsel for tax assessment appeals to resolve the following assessment appeals pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County under the terms listed.
Kristen, move. Snodgrass, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the lease agreements between the school district of Haverford Township and identified childcare providers for the use of designated spaces to provide childcare services as specified for the 2021-2022 school year, subject to solicitor and business manager review and approval.
Blyzer, moves.
Minji, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Could we hear a little about the services that the YMCA provides?
I'm just looking down to see if Martha wants to provide any information, or I'm happy to do so.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm not prepared.
No problem. I just didn't want to step on any toes. Yes. So the YMCA, this contract includes the YMCA using portions of the middle school to provide aftercare services. It's noted that this is something they had done prior to the pandemic. There are certain conditions wherein they are responsible for procuring the appropriate insurance, procuring the appropriate supervision, making sure that their employees have the proper clearances and are allowable to be working in the area. And while they are using our facilities, they are required to adhere to whatever our current health and safety plan requirements are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to reapprove the following updated insurance coverages for the 2021-2022 school year as provided by Arthur J. Gallagher and Company, the district's broker of record, as listed.
You move.
Blyzer, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the purchase of one cargo van for food service work at a cost not to exceed $36,000, which is the state contract pricing through Co-Stars.
Schwartz, moved.
Larson, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
There's an error in the numbers on the agenda?
It's missing a zero.
It's missing a zero.
Oh, okay.
We haven't voted yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the proposal from the Protection Bureau for the security card reader at the high school renovation project as recommended by the owner's representative, CB Development Services, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $3,875.
Blyzer, moves.
Kristen, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the retirements and resignations as listed.
Minji, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the following non-acceptance of appointment.
Snodgrass, move. Kristen, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the appointments as listed.
Minji, move.
Schwartz, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
It's an impressive list.
And it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the leave requests as listed.
Snodgrass, move.
Blyzer, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the following educational contracts for students attending out-of-district placement for the 2021-2022 school year.
Minji, move. Larson, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the following educational service contracts for services provided to students and/or staff with the district for the 2021-2022 school year.
Kristen, move.
Schwartz, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the recommendation of special counsel and authorize the resolution of the pending special education administrative proceedings and authorize the administration to implement the terms of the resolutions as listed.
Minji, move.
Kristen, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the memorandum. I'll accept the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Delaware County Intermediate Unit for COVID testing on district property.
Schwartz moves. Schwartz second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Could we hear a little bit about the plans for that testing?
Sure. This will seem very familiar. We used to have a similar agreement with the Chester County Department of Health, but we are no longer under their guidance, and therefore, we are seeking the same services that we have with them, and they are now able to be provided to us through the Delaware County IU. So this is rapid antigen testing, and this is for students who may become ill while they are, or start to feel ill while they are at school with parent permission. We would be happy to provide antigen testing only with parent permission if that were desired, and is also a part of a testing program available to our staff.
Thank you. And also, this is at no cost to the district, correct?
That is correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the secondary public comment. Same rules apply. When you come to the mic, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Our first speaker is Liam Riley. Liam?
Just the mic for him, yeah. Go ahead. You could take it off.
Take it off if it, like, and hand, hand hold it. There we go.
My name is Liam Riley. 400 Glendale Road. I am going into third grade at Manoa Elementary. I love Manoa Elementary, and the school is almost perfect. The only thing that's missing are swings. I really love swings. And only have three years left at Manoa. Please use any money left over from building Linwood to add a swing set to Manoa for kids like me to enjoy. Thank you.
They have an article that shows the importance of swings for kids that they wanted to give you guys.
Our next speaker is Nicholas Finelli.
Thank you very much. You did a great job. Good evening. This is long, yeah. My name is Nicholas Finelli. I reside at 811 Naylor's Run Road in Havertown, obviously. I have two things that I'm bringing up. The first part, I would like to thank the board for moving us into this lovely auditorium, and I think that we're going to need it in the fall when people are off vacation. We're going to fill this place up. The second thing, you guys put in the comments, I think it's a great idea, but the biggest problem is, at 3:00 in the afternoon, when you change the agenda, how can we come up with something to talk about? I really think this agenda needs to be locked down by Tuesday. It would help everybody. You have to do research before you can make a comment. And the last thing is, why do we get this microphone? And all the guests get to speak up there at the podium? I have notes, and it'd be a lot easier if I could place them down. So think about that for us. A few days ago, I was informed, I was informed of a potentially dangerous situation in the middle school. The cooler for the air conditioning system was found to be leaking freon, quite a bit of it. They had to add eight thousand dollars' worth of freon into the system. And I'm sure you people are aware of this, but I want the residents to know about this. The problem is that they found leaky valves. Those valves are located inside the building. So that freon is escaping inside the building. The valves aren't scheduled to be worked on until October. These kids are going to go back to school in the middle school with freon leaking. Now, under normal circumstances, it's not that dangerous. But I know we have people with asthma, the children, the employees, the teachers. This needs to be looked into. They do have a valve, excuse me, a meter, and I think every day that school needs to be walked through and checked. We could be open for a huge lawsuit. You're now informed of it, and if anything happens to any of those children, we're all going to end up paying for it. Hopefully, this situation is being taken care of right now. But if it isn't, please get it fixed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cara Hodawannick. Cara?
Hi, Cara Hodawannick, 1375 Harrington Road. I've done this before. Last meeting, a lot of people were getting really mad about critical race theory, which annoyed me because I felt like we were dealing with different definitions. Like, the most common definition I've come across is it's a framework in law particularly to look at how race and racism have affected history and how it's affected now. And I just didn't see the harm in including that in a curriculum. But I also don't know how you would, because most of the social studies classes that I've been through, you get a source, and you read it, and you make sure your source is valid, and then you make your own, then you make your own interpretation of it. So I just wanted to say that, like, you know, maybe, like, this is wild that we're talking about it. And also, that I would really like, during our unit on the Industrial Revolution, to talk about our rights as workers today. Because if you're preparing us for the world, you're preparing us for jobs. And I think that just saying, you know, these people protested, and their bosses put them in bad conditions, is not enough when we're going into jobs, and we should know what conditions we should be in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Bill Donahue.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight.
Address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. 326 Tagamar Road.
Thank you.
Bill Donahue. I'm here to speak about the current issues of equity, inclusion, and diversity. As we all know, the scientific method is a standard for drawing conclusions based on facts. Let's apply the scientific method to the current social justice debate in our society. So the first thing is the question. How can we increase equity, diversity, and inclusion for all students? Hypothesis. Eliminate bias in our curriculum and create an inclusive environment. Prediction. We will create a more equitable and unbiased learning environment for all students. Experiment. Teach children revised history to ensure that no one is offended. Shine a light on our racial and gender differences. Analysis. The result of our experiments have proven to increase bias and prejudice within our student body and our community, because of our focus has been on what has made us, is what is different about us rather than our commonalities. In our experiments, race and gender orientation are upheld as fundamental determinants of our human traits and capabilities. Our experiments have not advanced equity, diversity, and certainly not inclusion. Instead, we have sown seeds of division, animosity, and prejudice. Hypothesis has been proven incorrect, so we need to reevaluate. Our forefathers implemented a system of government that was the greatest experiment in history. And they're not perfect at the start. They created a government that could and would be amended over time, hence the abolishment of slavery and women's suffrage. Judging those of the past by the current social mores is unfair and inequitable at best. I certainly would not want to be judged today by my actions in my earlier years, especially when, as our forefathers did, I amended my life and modified my actions as I learned and matured over time. As a community, we must recognize and amend the flawed policies that have created the division we are currently experiencing. However, not to the detriment of those in the minority, but rather for the advancement of every individual student. We should not continue to implement, continue or implement policies that place any group above any other, or shame any group for the actions of those that came before us. Doing so deserves, doing so serves only to encourage a mindset of victimization and disadvantage, which ultimately promotes a lifestyle fraught with weakness and dependence. Each and every Haverford student has at their disposal the tools necessary to succeed and to achieve their maximum potential. But not every student has the same life experience, ambition, talents, or skills. Therefore, we should not expect-
Let's get a finish up, please.
I will. Therefore, we should not expect equal outcomes for all students, but rather the equal opportunity to pursue their individual God-given talents. This, my friends, is true diversity and equity. I'd like to close with a quote from Mr. Thomas Sowell, a prominent Black social theorist and economist. Quote, "Much of the social history of the Western world over the past three decades has been a history of replacing what worked with what sounded good." Thank you.
I want to thank all of our speakers again this evening. We may not agree on everything, but the board is most interested in hearing everyone's opinions and having an environment where everyone is comfortable to make their comments and opinions. Next item on our agenda is Board Committee Report. I think that's Finance Committee. Yes, Bridget?
Yeah, I will speak about the Finance and Facility Committee meeting that occurred last Thursday, August 12th. The board met as a committee of the whole on an agenda that included several topics. Two of them were already approved earlier here tonight. The insurance renewal that was to reflect appropriately a refund that was credited due to COVID-related closures. And we also, earlier tonight, approved the purchase of a food service van to deliver food between the buildings. Three other topics were a presentation on Tax Reassessments 101 that Martha Q. walked through, covering how the district's new real estate tax values as set by the county led to the new millage rate that was set to hold the district's total tax levy constant between school year 20 and school year 21, prior to the 2.6% rate increase for this current tax year. Mr. J.R. Gulyamie described issues with the two chillers. One of the speakers tonight mentioned this, at the Haverford Middle School, that have been prone to breakdowns and costly repairs. The district is scoping and getting bids for two new chillers that will be more efficient, have better controls, and will allow for redundancy. We expect to see this request at an upcoming meeting, likely the beginning of September, and for the work to be completed by year end, and it will be funded with our capital reserve. And then finally, Ken Matthews, who did a presentation tonight from CB Development, gave us the update on progress at Linwood and the high school. Both are on track for the start of school, with Linwood having additional site work that will be continuing in the fall. And then one other note was made about the district is recruiting food service and custodial staff, so please spread the word and inquire if you're interested. A video of the Finance and Facility Committee meeting is available on the district website where other board meetings are listed.
Thanks, Bridget. Board reports. Antoinette?
No report.
Ari?
Yeah, I have a small announcement to make. I've been granted permission to perform an additional volunteer job with the district as a assistant golf coach. I really appreciate this opportunity. It's a passion of mine. I'm a former college golf coach, and I ran the Upstart when we started a junior golf program at the YMCA for several years. So I really care about junior golf. I also run the Delaware County Junior Golf Championship. This past year, we had over 50 players at Lanar Country Club. So I'm very appreciative of this opportunity to continue to give back to this community. If there are any conflicts of interest that may arise, I will absolutely recuse myself.
Thanks, Ari. I know that golf's your passion, and it sounds like it's a great fit, so good luck with that. Dave?
Is it me? I'm sorry?
Yep.
Okay, yes. Now, just one quick thing. I just want to say very, very excited and happy that we've started our committee meetings. Previously, our liaison groups, and this was done largely to increase transparency with what we do. So now, any issue that you would like to view on recording or on live stream for facilities, finance, whatever, those are now being televised, or being streamed as opposed to being done and then being reported out. So very happy about that. That was done, like we said, to increase transparency with the public, and looking forward to having more of this.
And Dave, if I could just add, the meetings are open to the public. We'll have a schedule posted on the website. You're welcome to attend, and there is a public comment session related to agenda topics.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you both. Kristen?
I also wanted to give a shout out to our move to the committee of the whole structure. In addition to increasing transparency between the board and the public, it increases transparency amongst board members, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. Laura?
No report.
Sal?
No report.
Susan?
No report.
Bridget?
All right. I'm going to say I'm glad that we got to this point in tonight's meeting. I'm glad we got through it. The two updates at meetings that I attended, Larry was also present at both of them. The PSBA resumed its monthly buzz with statewide district leadership. It was a topic of reining in out-of-control school board meetings. Seems timely. There were tips and tools for maintaining decorum, and, you know, reaffirm the importance that this is a meeting of the board, not of the public with the board. We will endeavor to keep setting a professional tone and being open to communication. We know that people come and speak to the board out of care and concern for their students, our schools, and the community. We just need to hold that everyone is here for the same purpose, even if they're speaking alternate points of view. Board members, we're all volunteers elected by the community. We're advocates for our public education. We're proponents of high-quality schools for our community. We're stewards of the district and taxpayers' resources. I know our meetings get a lot of attention and debate. What you may not know is that we also get a lot of emails, and the board reads them all and pays attention. We appreciate the public comment and your opportunity to weigh in and voice your opinion and matters before the board. And I hope that we can continue to conduct the business of the district in a professional manner that sets a good example of the citizens that we are in, training our students to grow up to be in this world. Also, wanted to mention a meeting that Mr. Feinberg convened with district presidents of other local school districts. It was a great opportunity to hear how they're managing their meetings and navigating the many challenging topics of the day.
Thanks, Bridget. The board met in executive session prior to the Finance Committee meeting on August 12th to review personnel matter. And the board met in executive session this evening to discuss some legal matters with counsel. Our next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on September 2nd in the auditorium of the Haverford High School. I may have an update to that. I have a statement that I would like to read in closing the meeting. Everyone knows that for the past 18 months, our district and our community have had to address pandemic-related decisions that none of us could have foreseen nor had experienced before. We know that not everyone has agreed with the decisions that this board has made. I believe that the individual board members and the district administrator-